I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the report of which it stands foundation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed on the agenda may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I'd like to welcome all of you guys here tonight. This is might be a record number of people at our meetings and it's great to see you all, so thank you for coming out on this cold rainy night. I'd like to start with the approval of the minutes from the last meeting from October 16th. Move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And so we're going to get right into the recognitions. Mr. Badwell, will you?
Wow. He can invite you back. So pleased to hand out 28 John and Abigail Adams scholarships to members of the class of 2018. Students qualify for the scholarship by doing well on the MCAS test, having at least one advanced and the remaining two in the least in the proficient range in ELA math and the biology MCAS. And they must be in the top 25 percent of their class in regards to MCAS. This enables them to tuition free at a Massachusetts college or university. As I told the kids when we handed out the awards, it could be thousands of dollars over the course of four years. So it's a credit to what they do in the classroom, how they're learning the curriculum, they're learning the state standards, and they're excelling. And we hope that they will apply it. Even if they're not going to Massachusetts college or university, it's a great thing to put on the college application. So congratulations to all the students here today. We're going to recognize them by calling them up one at a time.
Dr. Oakley, do you want to join me in congratulating?
Sure.
Oh, do you want to read it? I'll read it off. I can read it right off this list. Sure, I will. Some of them aren't here tonight, but Brianna Alexander. Margaret Allen. Maura Campbell. Haley Davenport. Liberty DeAngelo. Yvonne Aldaya. Emma Gomes. Chase Hamel. Elizabeth Herman.
Thank you.
Vanessa Hurst. Kevin Lawler. Lauren Patterson. Christian Rodham. Casey Willis. And Faith Wintle. So once again, congratulations to all the class 2018 John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients.
So we're going to go into our next item on the agenda which is recognitions to MCAS perfect score. Remain where you are.
All right. To have a perfect score on anything is very hard to do. It's quite amazing actually, and when we look through, you know, every year we're happy, but you know, to look at say, wow, to score perfect on any type of state assessment is quite an accomplishment. So congratulations to all the students. They really upped the ante in terms of the MCAS this year, the next generation MCAS, and really put in some stuff that really stretches our kids. So these students deserve extra kudos for doing a great, great job. So the first one is Ava Milrick, grade five math. Zachary Bellity, grade seven math. Colleen O'Toole, grade eight ELA. And Caitlin McGrath, grade 10 math. Once again, congrats to all of our scholars.
So again, I want to thank you guys all for coming out tonight and also thank the parents for all the hard work. It's definitely a shame from your parents. We appreciate that the students could not be as successful as they are without the hard work of the parents. And of course, we always credit the school too, and are impressed. And we're in particularly impressed with the students. You guys are amazing to accomplish the things you do. It really gives us great pride to be able to recognize you guys, even though this might be a short moment in time, you guys do big things and continue to keep doing those big things. And with that said, we're going to take a brief recess here so that you can go home and continue to work on those wonderful things you guys work on. So thank you all for coming. Congratulations. I just get to use the gavel again. So the first, oh, we're going to go right into the superintendent's update with the MSBA event at the Middle Senior High School.
Right. Tomorrow at 8:00, there is an event at the Middle Senior High School. We were asked several months ago when the MSBA did a walkthrough to look at our school to see if we would be picked to be a model school. And I told you we were picked to be a model school. And we were also asked if we would host a training for business managers, superintendents, and other interested parties from other districts, school building committees, on the process of specifically picking furniture and furnishings in equipment. It's part of the Inspector General's MC PPO procurement course, and the people that are going for that can get credits, and they do it in different school buildings. So the day really, this day specifically focuses on the process of the FFNE, but also because we're a model school, I think many people are coming to see the school and what things go into a model. But most of the panel discussions and the keynote will be on the FFNE. It started out as 45 to 50 people coming to have the classes, and they'll be in the auditorium, and then we're going to feed them lunch. And as of last Thursday night, we've got an email that it was about 100 people that are coming. So we're squirming a little bit for size, especially trying to tour 100 people around, so we're breaking them into groups with the panel, and then they'll have a lunch and wrap it up. So it goes eight to four, but you know, it's a really great honor for West Bridgewater to have been asked to do this, and that we were asked to go through our process with people and be able to tell them the lessons that we learned and some best practices so that it can be an easy process for other people going through it. So that will be tomorrow. Hopefully, all will go well. The Spring Street School, we've asked all the Spring Street people to park on the lot behind the Spring Street School so that we can have enough parking for all the visitors that will be here. So if you go by and you see tons and tons of cars, then you'll know why everyone is here.
Yeah. You'll just have to pull your notes out from the dedication with the tours and stuff.
Yeah.
That's how you do that, remember?
Yes, exactly.
That would be great.
We will be doing that.
It's a lot of people, so.
It is. So wish us luck. It should be a good day.
Good luck.
One more thing for superintendent's update that I don't have on there, but I did want to congratulate and draw note, make note of the boys and girls cross-country teams, specifically still in, they're actually the only team we have left that's still in a tournament if you want to, they're going to the states as a team, which a lot of times in a sport like track, cross-country, you can score as an individual and you get to go to states. Not as many get to go as a full team. And so to have both of our boys and girls qualify is a really big thing. The girls actually have qualified for the third time in the past four years. The boys qualified for the first time in 54 years that they had a team to the state meet as a team. So oftentimes, we don't hear as much about something like cross-country because, you know, a lot of people, you're going to have to go out and see it, and you don't see them on the whole thing and stuff like that. But it's really a big thing to have our boys and girls teams do that well in cross-country. So kudos to them, and we'll let you know how they make out. But I think we're going to have some really good performances at the state meet. So that's exciting.
Very exciting. Mr. Badwell, would you do a safe school update for us?
I first want to thank our Safe Schools Committee. We've got a very active committee that meets regularly, probably every four to six weeks we have a meeting. We have members of the school committee, we have administrators, we have central office personnel, police, fire, nursing leaders, school psychologists who all attend, and they all have input into any decision that's made. And it's always in the best interest of the kids, so we're always looking back to what we can do to kind of make sure everyone that enters any of the buildings here in the district are safe. So some of the things that we've accomplished recently, at the Middle Senior High School, we just administered the Youth Risk Behavior Survey to all students, grade seven to 12. It's with the Chromebooks now, it's pretty easy. Now, we can all just send out the link and they can complete it. It provides great data, not only for the administrators, but also for our health teachers. So we'll compare that data to the last time it was taken and see if any changes need to be made within the curriculum being taught in the health classes, or any programs we want to offer at the Middle Senior High School. Across the district, we had a recent lockdown drill at the end of September. Throughout the district, we provided the teachers with information on what to do in an enhanced lockdown situation. There are protocols in place for things to talk about. We don't really practice, you know, them evacuating the building or barricading, but we, you know, we feel it's important to have those genuine conversations with the kids so they are prepared in the case of an emergency. The police department's been wonderful in coming over and supervising that with us and giving us feedback as well. Just last week, we had a canine drug search of the building and the grounds and the parking lots. Officer Flaherty did a great job coordinating this. We had about, I think we had 10 or 11 different dogs in the building, in the locker room, searching lockers, searching classrooms, searching cars. Again, the goal is to be drug-free, so we want to, you know, encourage, you know, the public to know it's a safe place to be. And we'll do it again, you know, he's offered to come in at any point, so he can come in and sweep a locker room if he wanted to. So we'll keep that option open. In February, we did this a couple of years ago, we have a, it's called a distractibility trailer. Dr. Oakley did it and I did it last time we had there. It's for distracted driving, so it's a simulator that the kids can go into and they test them in terms of they think they can actually text and drive, they think they're, you know, so other things distract them. So we'll find a place for this trailer to go, little sign-ups for our kids, and they can sign up and go. And it's, I tell you, as an adult, I found it really valuable to go through it.
Well, it wasn't valuable. They have you driving on the simulator, and then they say, okay, take out your phone and text someone. So they really have you text like someone, and you're out, and then different things happen. I did hit someone in a crosswalk. It was actually kind of scary, but so, but it really does show you that you just looked out for that one second. And I was sure, because as I was looking, I'm like, nah, this won't happen.
And it really just kind of reinforces all the good things you should be doing when you're driving, the proper way to drive. I mean, one thing I did, I remember I stopped at a, a car stopped at a crosswalk, and I just kind of kept going, and bam, took that person right out. But now, every time I drive through Bridgewater Center and I see people stopped, I always stop and wait now. And I'm sure the kids would have a similar experience, because it's kind of, it's very realistic, so it's great. In December, we had to reschedule this because of a conflict with one of our speakers, but we're going to be having the Safe Dates program back with Officer Sergeant Nixon and Health Imperatives, and they'll be doing kind of dating violence talk to the kids. And we found it very good, and we're kind of pushing it down to the eighth graders as well, as well as here. And this Thursday, we have our Drug Awareness Night at 6:30. Dr. Muse will be there. He's the ER doctor, head doctor at Brockton Hospital and the medical consultant for the Mass State Police. We have Assistant District Attorney Jason Thomas coming to speak. Ryan Morgan from Independence Academy, their principal will be speaking. Sergeant Nixon will be speaking, as well as EB Hope will be there, and they're going to be doing kind of an in-play insight demonstration so people can look at some of the items that could be used as drug paraphernalia that we may not think of it as that. So they're going to put up a display, I think, in the cafeteria.
That's for parents and students?
Yes. Yeah, primarily parents, but if students want to come, it's open to anyone. And then just last week, I actually received a nice phone call from a parent who wanted to talk to me about experience that her child had in an emergency situation. She had come home and she had to respond to a medical emergency within her own house. She had to call 911, she had to do something with her younger siblings, she had to get them to a neighbor's house so she could tend to the family member and the parent, and was commended by the police when they responded. And the parent wanted to let me know that she felt she responded so well because of the training that she has received as a student here, you know, in the district in terms of, you know, if something happens, what do you do, how do you respond in an emergency situation? So it was nice to hear that perspective from a parent who had a child going through a situation that was uncomfortable, but they learned to kind of calm themselves down and make good decisions. So, you know, I think it's important, I sent that out to our staff, just letting them know that, you know, when we do these kind of drills, it's important, because it's not only important for in school, but it's important in life. Continue on doing all the things that we're doing and more.
I have all of them. We're pretty lucky in this town. That we have such a big group, but it's also a group that meets consistently all the time. I go to a lot of different meetings with different town superintendents, and many of the towns, they don't have as good a relationship with the law enforcement in their town. They certainly don't have people from each, you know, public safety unit and everyone's sitting on the committee that's actually helping make the decisions and look for programs. And to have such a big group of all the nurses and some teachers and school committee members, so we're pretty fortunate that we have that relationship and that Mark leads that up and gets it going, and we get a lot of good things going because of it. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, there's a lot of great work going on at the Safe School Committee. One thing I will note is Mr. Badwell talked about the drug search, and that was done at the Middle Senior High School. And all the training is done at all the schools, but they are age-appropriate at each of the different schools. So a lot of what he referred to was at the Middle Senior High School, which is great, but it's age-appropriate throughout, so all the kids in the district are being exposed to the different things, but at their age-appropriate level. So it's excellent. I know that's a concern of parents a lot of times.
I'd like to bring up also November 16th, Thursday night. I don't think enough parents really take advantage of that night. I mean, we all, mostly all come, and just the amount of people, it's a really important night for the parents, just to see what's out there, what the kids are into. You know, they might not always think that their kids are doing the right things and whatnot, but to just open their eyes to some of these things. I've been to a few different ones, even the ones here, and they're just amazing what is happening right in front of your eyes that you don't notice. And if anybody who can make it is really encouraged to be here Thursday night.
Are there any incentives for the kids? I know we talked about that.
Before I put that, I'll do a teacher's thing. And I'll do another connecting message. About a couple of emails, and I'll do another, I'll do a voice memo as well.
Great. Thank you. You know, we had talked about, kind of coined it as it's dare for parents, and to piggyback on what Bill's saying, your kid's probably not doing it, but maybe your kid's friends. Everyone always says, it's, well, it's not my kids. Well, why don't you come see what your kid's friends might be up to? Because it's probably not your kids, so that might be. But yes, it's always great information and a great panel of people coming. Dr. Oakley, back to you with the next generation of MCAS.
Okay. So.
Talk about Drug Awareness Night might be easier than MCAS.
I don't really know. Oh, they're not in exact order. Okay, we'll go back. Anyway, it's a good thing this was an MCAS question.
Just as confusing as some of them is.
So the next gen MCAS, which is what this first year in 2017 of the MCAS was called, it just, I think eventually the next gen will be gone, will just be called MCAS again. But it really needs to be shown that it's a completely different test. The old MCAS, or the legacy MCAS as they call it, was over 20 years old, and a lot of things have changed in 20 years. So they, the state, you know, we went to part, they formed a consortium, we went with other states, and then the state decided, you know, we're actually better off if we do our own. So they went back to a new MCAS. So tonight, I just wanted to go over a reminder, I know I did this at the last meeting, but to get it out there again, of some of the key points about the new test. Also give you just kind of some, a brief overview of our scores, because our scores did come out and parents have received them, and some of the things that we're doing, or the curriculum implications based on this MCAS. So just to review a little bit, the, you know, the next generation, it's a new test, and the key point that the state wanted to put out, and I agree with, is that this year's results cannot be compared to last year's. It's not only a different test, it's a completely different scoring system and everything. So it can't be compared, and that's important, because I know when parents get the results and they look at it and they say, wait a minute, my kid was in the top tier last time, why aren't they this time? It's a different test. So you've got to look at it as this is the first time, and look at it a little bit differently. What's different? The tests focus on higher-order skills, critical thinking abilities, application of knowledge, ability to make connections between reading and writing. And also the testing format and structure is more rigorous in the assessment of how it assesses the new standards that we have. So for example, in the English Language Arts, one of the biggest difference, grades three through eight, is that there's, at every single grade level, there's a writing in response to text. We've never had that before. You had a writing prompt in some of the grades, you know, and so you would write about it. But now it's critical writing, it's close writing, it's reading text and synthesizing the information and then writing about it. It's a different, it's a different skill, and it's done at all grade levels. So that is much more rigorous. An example for mathematics be that we always had problems that kids had to do, but for example, we didn't almost tell them how to solve it. So one in seventh grade math is, they'd give a word problem and say, using the Pythagorean theorem, solve the following problem. So the kids would know, okay, how do I solve this? But now, they're just going to give a word problem and say, solve this problem. Well, there are a lot of different ways to solve problems, and you have to decide whether or not you're using some formula from geometry, or ratios and proportions, or functions and equations, or whatever. And you can see how that's a higher skill level, because you not only have to know how to solve the problem, but you have to know which way to solve the problem. Takes a lot more deep thinking and critical understanding to do that stuff. So that's the type of material that's being assessed. But also, the format and structure is more rigorous as far as a lot of different type of question types, more constructive response type things, fewer multiple choice. So short answer and those types, because they want you to not just give an answer, but explain how you got an answer, why, apply it. That's really the biggest difference in the task. This year, our scores will be our baseline. Our baseline went back to 1998 before, and the measurement of improvement and growth and accountability was based on that baseline. So now it's thrown out, and this is, we're not comparing anything to the past, which originally, there was going to be a comparison, but it changed so much that there isn't. Because the part tests were actually compared to the old MCAS, but this new one, this is our baseline. So we start from here, and when they measure and see how our growth is for our accountability ratings, it's based on this 2017 baseline year. Another difference is, the MCAS now uses a scale of 440 to 560. Before, it was 220 to 800?
280.
280. Yeah.
Go on, Nancy.
And it's a smaller scale and also has new performance descriptors. I don't know if you can see it. This is an example of a parent report that went home. You can see that the descriptions, it's not meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations. You recall before, it was warning, needs improvement, proficient, advanced. But again, the other thing that's different is the scaling of the scores. So you can't say that, okay, not meeting expectations is exactly the same as warning. And partially meets is exactly the same as needs improvement. It's not the same, because the scaling of the score is also different. I think it's natural for a parent to look at it and think, these are the four categories, so it must be the same thing. And so all's we can tell you is, it is not the same thing. So we have to look at it, look at it differently, although sometimes hard to do that when it's on that scale. In some subject in grades, fewer students scored meeting or exceeding expectations than scored proficient or advanced in the previous years. The key for parents to know is, it's not, it doesn't mean- The key for parents to know is it's not, it doesn't mean that the students learned less or that the school's not doing what they're supposed to do or not doing as much as they did before. It's just that the new MCAS measures more rigorous standards in. The more rigorous standards, okay? It's just a more rigorous test. It's more rigorous in its standards and what is being asked. So it's important for people to understand that. That's good. The new scoring develops a consistent set of performance standards across all grades. This is important. I think I might have explained this at the last meeting, but we started out with a fourth grade test, an eighth grade test, and a 10th grade test back in 1998. And so the scoring was done based on those four tests, those three tests, those three grade levels. Then we added a sixth grade and a third grade, then we added a fifth grade, you know. So we kept adding them year after year at different times. So they were completely different tests and scored completely independent of each other. Because of that, some grade levels may have had artificially inflated or deflated scaled scores and they weren't the same. All these tests are being, you know, created at the same time with the same scoring standard. So you shouldn't see that, for example, one of the ones that was the eighth grade ELA always had a very high level of proficient and advanced. Seventh grade didn't. It wasn't necessarily that your seventh graders didn't do as well or your eighth graders did better. What we found out is it was really that the scale at school was different. What they said for seventh grade was advanced might have been tougher to get to than what eighth grade was. So now that they've kind of equalized it all, one of the things that we noticed is the eighth grade scores were a lot lower than, a lot lower than they had been, because that goes down more than the seventh grade that was already a little bit lower. So now it's equalized. So in order to equalize something and to balance it out, you have to shake it up a little bit. And that's why part of the change has been made, also why the scores seem a lot lower because of where they placed it. And I think it's important, this is what the state also, and I agree with this, there are only one measure of a child's growth and achievement. We do so much more and there's so many things that go on in every school, but in these schools in West Bridgewater, every single day to show their achievement and growth, this is just one little data point. It does count for accountability, so it's important. At 10th grade, right now it's a high stakes and they have to do it in order to get their diploma. But I think the point of this is they did raise the bar, it's more rigorous. So we need to look at things to make sure that kids know, understand, and are able to do these more rigorous tasks. But it's not the only thing we're going to focus on, because we want to focus on the whole child and it's important to develop everything for the child. So in West Bridgewater, and I just picked out some strengths and weaknesses, in the areas of strength, so what I picked for strength, because sometimes we look at state average, these grades and subjects were 10 to 15 points above the state. So I figured that would be a good cutoff for strength. So grade three English Language Arts, grade five and grade six ELA and math were at least 10 to 15 points above the state. So, you know, they should be given kudos for that. That was, that's a great strength. In areas for improvement, and it wasn't 10 to 15 points below, but even if it was just one point below the state, I put it as an area for improvement. Grade three math, grade seven math, grade eight ELA and math. It's interesting that grade three math and grade eight ELA and math were two of those grade levels and subjects that were artificially inflated in the old system. And so I think they've just been, so that could have something to do with how they're brought back down based on the score. And then, anything not mentioned, scored above the state average, just not 10 to 15 points above the state average. So overall, you know, for a first time, throwing out a new rigorous exam, we actually did okay. Being, you know, a little anal about the stuff, as you know. I did, I looked at area schools and looked at how they, you know, scored and stuff and we're right in there and still a little bit above most of the other places in some of the, in most of the areas. You know, there's some that were below and above, but, so we're on track, because it's not, you know, you're not supposed to compare, but you want to compare. At least I do. To all the competition, no.
Interesting to note is two of our perfect MCAS recipients was a grade seven in math and then grade eight ELA, which were the two areas for improvement.
Yeah.
So that's interesting.
We did something right.
Really? Excellent.
So how, so what are the next steps? What should we, oop, one more thing. It's important to note that our results were only compared to communities who took the computer-based test. In two years, everyone's going to have to take the computer-based test, three through 10. Last year, you only had to, you did not have to take it computer-based. You could still take the paper and pencil at certain grade levels and you could even get a waiver to take it at all grade levels. This year, they're adding two more grade levels that they want more people to take. But there are still some districts out there that just don't have the capabilities, especially some larger districts and rural districts out in Western Mass. I mean, I talked to one superintendent out in Western Mass that is a regional school district and said that they don't, they don't even have broadband or anything yet. They don't have, you know, they, at their houses, their phones don't even work. So how are they getting the computers to do this? And that's where the state, what they're fighting is, you want us to do this, but you have to give us the infrastructure. So not everybody is on track yet. We were compared to other districts that took the computer-based test at all grade levels. And I think one thing that Mr. Bobwell and I were talking about, the majority of those school districts that took it at all levels tend to be more affluent districts. So we were compared to, it wasn't being compared to the entire state. So when I say compared to the state, it was the state that took the computer-based. I have had some teachers say, "Well, I know that some kids would feel more comfortable paper and pencil," or "I've heard that if you take pencil, the scores are a little bit higher." And they have proven that that has happened, because I think part of it is they have to get used to taking assessments online. So they've asked, "Is there a possibility that we could go back and do that?" And on some grades, we wouldn't have the option anyway, but I would prefer that, since in two years, we're supposed to all be there, our kids are already practiced, now we might as well stay with it. I don't think, in order to get higher test scores, you go to that, I think you just work on it with this. So we are going to be staying with it. And this coming spring, the science will be computer-based. It was not last year, it was paper, pencil. And then the following year, the grade 10 will become computer-based. So the next step, so what we're doing now, we've been doing data analysis at all grade levels, because we want to see, we needed to see what the tests are like, what are they asking, how come they did well in this and not in this? One thing I can tell you is as you look at the descriptors of the questions, because they don't release that many items, so you can't read the exact questions, but they give you item descriptors, that it is definitely much more constructive response, much more in math, many more multi-step problems, real-life application, all those things. So we've been doing the data analysis, coming up with some action plans or things that we can note, that we look at and say, "How can we work on this and how could we take this assessment and inform our instruction and curriculum?" We're going to be doing an elementary literacy review, which is similar to what we did a couple of years ago with elementary math. We had to just look at it and say, "Okay, we've had the same program for this many years, let's look at a lot of different things, let's see where we are." We need to do that with the reading and writing at the elementary school. So we'll be getting together a committee to work on that, similar to what we do in math, starting after the first of the year. We've been working on implementing the differentiated instruction PD. Elementary schools have already started, the high school will start after they go through their self-assessment with MEAS, which is this first semester. And we'll be working on differentiated instruction as a way to help personalize in the classroom, as a way to help remove the barriers that might be preventing some kids from not reaching the same standards. So we'll be working on that this year and through the next several years, so we're looking at that. There's going to be an examination of the special ed and Title I service delivery. Mr. Mike Lazek is going to be looking at special education services, co-teaching models, inclusionary environment, the language-based type learning things, other programs we can add, what's our, you know, it's, we've had the same program for a while, it's similar to looking at the literacy review. We've had these programs for a while, he's going to really look at it and say, "Okay, what do we have? How can we improve this? What do we do well? What do we need improvement on that?" And I'll be doing the same thing with Title I service delivery with the reading specialists. And then, kind of parallel of this, we'll be working on a district strategic action plan with a new format based on a new state model that's come out. And we have Ms. Suley who is going and getting trained through the state to help us with that. So appreciate her doing that. Questions or comments?
So, it's great. One comment about the, I love that the teacher is coming forward and saying the student would do better if they were writing rather than typing, but I also like the decision that we're sticking with the, you know, doing it on the computer-based test, because it is the way that things are going in this world. But it goes back to, this is just one area. So as long as those teachers still are keeping in mind that different students need different things and we accommodate those things, but in this case, we don't. And that's life and there are going to be circumstances where you don't, you know, you can't, you can't accommodate. So that, and then just from a parent perspective, I mean, these are all huge things, our students are, you know, and educators are, you know, taking this challenge on. I mean, I will make homemade pancakes instead of box pancakes going forward. I will try to get them to bed a half an hour earlier. I mean, like, it's hard to, you know, to think about how much more you can do to make them successful and I know that's what you guys are challenged with. So, you know, I'll continue to try to think of ways at home to also support them, but, you know, everyone's really giving it their all, including the students, and that's, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, and I think I said it at the last meeting, it wasn't that they weren't giving it their all and the school wasn't, it's just, you know, and I go back being a former track coach to that high jump bar and everyone, you get to a point and it's like, "Oh, I finally made, you know, five feet, finally got over, finally go over." And then, "Woo-hoo, now can you do five more?" You're going to fail a couple times, you're going to knock that bar over, but what else can you work on your form? Can you do that, you know? So that's really what it's like and we have to find ways to perfect that.
And we will.
Anything else? Next.
All right, I have under business, we're going to put together athletic, Athletic Director Exploratory Subcommittee.
And so do you want to...
So the Athletic Director Exploratory Subcommittee, a long name for it. Mr. Barrett is retiring at the end of this year. And we had talked about what type of model do we want as far as an athletic director goes? Talked about that in the past. We also wanted to look at what would be the most cost-effective situation and put together a description of duties, because as I've been talking to other districts, if they're about our size and they have a full-time athletic director, there's also other things they do, because this, you know, in-between season, there's other times that they may not be as busy, so there are other things they do. So what I'd like to do is ask for a subcommittee and that person, those people, those two people could meet with me. We can come up with a structure that we're interested in, that we want, come up with a job description or expectations for a new person and then go from there. And I'd like to do it now, because I think after the first of the year is when you want to start thinking about advertising and training and maybe when you get someone on, working with the outgoing person for a while, because they do the schedules early and a lot of things in athletics are done early. So I'm really just looking for a subcommittee that we get together and then we'll have the expectations, because we've had these conversations so many times of, "Well, what does this person do? What does this person, should this person be here and do this? This way it will all be down in a document."
Okay, that's great. Are there any committee members that are interested in serving on the Athletic Director Exploratory Subcommittee?
I would like to.
I would like to also.
All right. I feel comfortable with Mr. Holden.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And we'll...
We will be open for you guys calling us, anything you can think of. Doesn't mean that it's just us, you know what I mean?
What about, is there, is there any benefit to having like a coach or another person on the subcommittee?
Mr. Bobwell, because he oversees. He's the actual...
I don't know if he's prepared, but forgive me, like he did last year.
Maybe we should get a referee.
We won't be going too much.
That might actually be, you say that jokingly, but something like that. I mean, the officials, I think, work very closely with the athletic directors. Someone, you know, that to complete the circle of, you know, I'd say a student athlete or, you know, those perspectives too might be beneficial. All right, excellent. So thank you, Mr. Flynn and Mr. Holden, for being on the Athletic Director Exploratory Subcommittee. Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Hulam, thank you so much for going to the joint conference. Will you guys give us an update on what you learned and...
Yes, I would be happy to. Donna and I had the privilege of attending this year's MASC conference down at the Hyannis Conference Center. It was a three and a half or a four-day conference. We were able to attend one of the days as well as I was the delegate for the resolutions, so I wanted to talk about those briefly. There were seven resolutions and actually Donna was able to receive the resolution booklets from the, kind of this district's resolution committee to talk about them and have a discussion prior to the vote at the conference. So out of the seven resolutions, I don't want to really just besides, just explain what there were, all but one passed, which was interesting. The first one was the movement of the Chapter 70 funding enrollment date to March 15th. There was a tremendous amount of discussion on this resolution. And at the delegate session, it was important to note that one of the members had reminded the committee that this isn't being voted into law, that this is just really trying to phrase and to get the language down with what the intentions are, to get it onto the legislature. So I think that kind of had the other members, the other delegates there, a different perspective going forward, that there weren't... going forward, that they weren't feeling that it was so black or white, that there wasn't such a push on trying to either pass it or not pass it. So, resolution one was actually sent back down to the district that submitted it, which was the Framingham School Committee. Resolution two did pass, though, meaning it was going to move forward to the legislature, and that was the reform of the circuit breaker funding. Resolution three was the litigation for fair school finance. Resolution four was the privatization of public education and the oversight of public schools, including small and regional districts. And then, five was the use of federal funds. Six was the foundation budget. And seven was the Affordable Care Act and Medicaid. So, after, as I said, a lot of discussion for the first one, it was voted back down to the local school committee that put it forward, and then I'm sure that they'll revise that so that next year's conference, it will come up again. I'm pretty sure about that. Unless there's a, a means for it to come up in the interim, which I'm not really too sure procedurally. The conference was, again, I'm never let down by the conference. I attended two sessions, two seminars, and one was very interesting with respect to the policymaking for drug use. And I was able to not only get a couple of resources, but also tie it in with our opiate, opioid night on the 16th, in that there was a presenter from a recovery high school in the western part of the state, and she was saying some very familiar things that the Brockton High School, the recovery high school from Brockton, Ryan, what's his last name? Ryan Morgan has spoken about before, so I'm interested in hearing Ryan speak on Thursday night. And then, I also attended another seminar with respect to the coding of the policies, which is interesting from my perspective, because we had voted in, and I was definitely holding out on that, for the revamping of our policies through the MASCE, and that was eye-opening as well. There's a lot to it that I really just, I wasn't aware of. I'm not saying I agree with it yet, but I do have some, some things to learn, so that was also a humbling experience. And then, if Donna wanted to speak about the seminars that she attended?
Yeah, I also had the opportunity to attend two. One was called Special Education 2.0, and the other was Creating Inclusive Schools That Foster Improved Student Outcomes, which I think you attended one as well, Dr. Oakley, and they both were informative. It's interesting, because I've been to a few of these now, and it, it seems like the topics on the seminars I attend are familiar, because a lot of times, we're already doing that. And they're, the seminars is kind of to get whatever topic it is out to other school districts. And the second one we attended was a lot of familiar topics, just in terms of inclusion. But it was good, I was glad to attend.
It was, it's always informative. So, thank you for allowing me to be the delegate.
Thanks for going, and it's great to hear that you can bring back new ideas, but then also that it sounds like we're, we're on track, which is what we want to be.
Did you have another opinion on the one that went back?
Um, I actually supported the fact that it was going back, because there were so many positions that were brought up about the March 15th date versus December 31st date, and then there was also another, June 1st, I think they had talked about that. And there were probably maybe three to five delegates who made statements that I was like, oh, yeah, I agree with that. Oh, yeah, I agree with that. So, it was very difficult. I could understand the positions.
Did you go with that?
No.
Is it, how would it affect it if it really gone through? Positive or negative?
So, when it goes through, it goes forward to go to the, to the legislature.
It will, but hopefully, they're going to be able to, I guess, run it through their data a little bit more to see when the actual timeframe. I think it's leaning more towards a 1231 date, more so than the March 15th. Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I think it should stay where it is, based on what I know.
Yeah, it was interesting, it really was interesting, but I voted for it to go back down, so.
Yeah, definitely was interesting to hear how some districts enrollment just varies so much over the school year.
I know.
So, it's hard to find a good compromise, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mrs. Hume, will you give us an Inclusion Matters update?
I will. I got a update from Melissa Winchell, who's the Inclusion Matters Chair, and she gave me a couple of bullets to share with everyone. We hosted our first family event in the school year, of the school year, in October. Eight children and their families joined at Just Clang Around in Bridgewater for a painting party. And we've had two public meetings this year, a meet and greet with Mr. Corey Michael Azic in September, and a presentation by the Federation of Children with Special Needs on Parents' Rights and Responsibilities in October. Both were well-attended, four new-to-us families attended the meetings, and so our circle is growing wider.
That's great.
They also hosted a Parents' Night Out in September, which included 12 parents. The next meeting for the public is Monday, December 4th at 6:00 PM, right here in the Learning Commons. We are welcoming a meditation teacher from the local Zen loft to talk about stress management techniques for parents and to lead us in a brief meditation. Our next Parents' Night Out is Wednesday, November 29th at 6:00 PM at A Tina's Asian Bistro in West Bridgewater. And then, one other board note, two of the board members, Mary Ronstrom and Tina Nolan, resigned this month, and we are grateful to them for their service to Inclusion Matters as we look now toward filling those spots with two new board members.
Excellent. So, assignment of policies. We have policy 5200, Curriculum Development.
Just that one. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Policy 6100, Attendance Age Requirements in Home/Hospital Education Policy.
I can take that one?
All right. Excellent. And then, policy 8000.
Mr. Holden.
All right, thank you.
I have a connection with the boosters, so we'll see what happens. Not a good connection all the time.
Well, include also academic, athletics, and the fine arts.
Yeah, that's where, that's where I need help.
The fine arts, he won't be. Mr. Nolan, thank you guys for doing those policies. Warrants, we have warrant 19A dated November 16th, 2017, for $495,437.22, and warrant 19.
That's a roll call.
Oh, we're going to do a roll call vote for 19A. Okay, so, can I get a motion to approve that? Moved, okay, Anna. Okay, and Donna?
In favor, yes.
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 Recuse.
Recuse.
All right, three in favor, two recuse. Warrant 19B dated November 16th, 2017, for $112,410.15.
Moved.
Second.
All right, moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. Public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Anyone like to address the committee?
Okay.
For all those viewers out, you can email your questions to us. So, upcoming dates, district-wide, on November 20th, 21st, we have a half-day school and parent conferences. Don't we also have a half-day school on the 17th?
Yeah, but that's not district-wide.
Well, that's just at the middle senior high school. Okay, sorry.
In the elementary. So, that will be on their school one?
Okay, November 22nd, just read what it says. Half-day school. November 23rd and 24th, we're going to have Thanksgiving break. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. November 29th at 6:00 PM, the Inclusion Matters Parents' Night Out at A Tina's Asian Bistro. December 4th at 6:00 PM, Inclusion Matters, the Holiday Zen at the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. At the Middle Senior High School on November 15th, 7:00 PM, the Athletic Boosters Meeting. November 16th at 6:30, the Drug Safety Night, that we're also calling the Dare Night. Come out and find out what your kids' friends are doing. On November 17th, the Life Touch Pitcher Retake Day, from 10:30 to 3:00, the Mental Health Fair, which is someone's senior project, oh, that's exciting. That's for the students inside. And then, from 2:00 to 3:00, the Middle Senior, Middle School Parent Conferences on the 17th. On November 18th, from 10:00 to 11:30, the Zumba-thon fundraiser for Puerto Rico, from November 20th to 22nd. 6:00 to 8:00 PM, the Middle and Senior High School Parent Conferences, parent-teacher conferences. November 29th, 7:00 PM, the National Junior Honor Society Induction. November 30th, 6:30 PM, the Cross Country Banquet. On December 1st, at 6:30, a Free Music Boosters Holiday Show. December 2nd, band members participate in the East Bridgewater Christmas Parade. On December 5th, 6:30 PM, the Music Boosters Meeting. December 6th, 7:00 PM, the African Dance and Storytelling Program. And December 7th, the Leo's Induction. December 8th, from 9:00 to 2:00, the Red Cross Blood Drive. And at 7:00 PM, a Middle School Dance. Oh, wow. That's exciting. Mr. Flynn, would you like to read our Howard School events? Thank you.
November 14th, Student Council, 2:45. November 15th, Pitcher Retakes. November 15th, the Geography Bee Triots. November 17th, Report Cards Go Home. November 17th through the 21st, Parent-Teacher Conferences. December 4th through the sixth-grade field trip to Dodge Stadium. December 4th at 6:00 PM, Inclusion Matters, the CPAC. The Roseell on November 17th, the Distribution of Report Cards. November 17th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, Parent-Teacher Conferences. November 18th at 10:00 AM through 2:00 PM, PTO of End of Fair Cafeteria, PTO sponsored. November 20th, 5:00 PM through 7:00 PM, November Parent-Teacher Conferences. November 21st, Parent-Teacher Conferences, times vary by parents' needs. November 22nd, 11:30 AM, Generosity Assembly. November 28th at 7:00 PM, the PTO Meeting, Howard School. December 1st, 7:00 to 8:30 PM, Elf Shop Evening in the Gym, PTO sponsored. December 2nd, 12:30 to 2:30, Cookies with Santa, PTO sponsored. December 4th, the Ned Show, Never Give Up, Encourage Others, Do Your Best, PTO sponsored. December 7th, 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock, Roseell McDonald Kid Council. Spring Street School, November 15th through the 17th, Pre-K Thanksgiving Feast. November 16th, kindergarten, Walk to Town Library. November 16th, 2:45 PM, Spring Street School Council Meeting. November 7th is the Kindergarten Pyjama Day. November 20th and 21st, Parent-Teacher Conferences, pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. November 22nd, 9:15 to 9:45, Kindergarten Thanksgiving Feast. And November 28th and 29th, Life Touch Retake Pitchers.
Note to Mr. Michael Azic.
Just one quick question, there was a, we were given a field trip request, was that withdrawn for the ECA?
Yeah, postponed. That's postponed until next month.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything. Okay, um, oh, this is when, oh, I tell you, our next regular school committee meeting is going to be December 11th at 6:30 PM at the Middle Senior High School. And everyone have an enjoyable Thanksgiving. Would be another thing I'd want to express to all of you, and then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, we have, I don't know if we had to post, because we're all known at this.